Okay, welcome to this afternoon's work session. Are there any preliminary items for the next BLC meeting that any of the commissioners would like to discuss at this time?
No, sir.
All right, here and none. Let's go into our discussion, our work session discussion items. First, I need to announce that the Atlanta Community Improvement District presentation will not be given today. It will be rescheduled for another date. So first up will be our film and movie studio. I think Mr. Egeke will give us presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Vice and Commissioners. Good afternoon. I bring to you today our attempt to expand our economic development footprint in, with regards to movie studios in the county. What we have now in the county is that the only, in the whole, in the entire county, the places where you can find a movie studio, it's in the cities and not in the unincorporated county. We have a movie studio that approached us via tourism that came. And while we're having the discussion, it don't know that we need to do something to be able to accommodate them, to be able, not just them, but the list of companies that have been asking questions about movie studios. And most of these movie studios are buying huge empty buildings because the movies are shot inside of the, inside of the movies with their sets and things like that. So we have one zoning district that permits movie studios, the new IMDP. That was the vision for Mountain View, except that IMDP is only in one place, in Mountain View. So by expanding the ability to attract movie studios, we are proposing to expand that use to include light industrial and heavy industrial, to put it in those two areas so that we'll be able to respond to the requests that we are getting. What I learned by dealing with tourism and the folks who came to us, that the requests, there's a lot of requests coming our way. So, and that's one of the reasons we are trying to do this. By doing those two, that's a lot of, it will help us to utilize some of the empty spaces in LI and HI and be able to also, like I said earlier, increase our economic development footprint. And we think the impact to our general attraction will be great. And that's really what I wanted to present to the board, that you're going to see it come by, we're going to advertise it, and because we have to go through the zoning procedural laws to advertise it and come back to you for request, for approval.
Okay, so basically, we had gotten a request to buy a movie studio or a movie company to convert one of the warehouses to make it a soundstage to produce movies. And I, this new text, well, adding, what is it, IDN fee, the text amendment? That it would allow more maybe vacant warehouses and areas such as, such as that to convert to movie studios, whether it's soundstage or something different, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Egeke?
Yes. So what will be the means for us to then recoup our ability to tax those businesses? Have you all thought through that process?
Not quite, because how we tax them is not really what is covered under my department. That we're going, I think it's left to the assessor and commissioner to figure out how that is done.
Have you contacted the State of Georgia's for their, for their film and studio to be able to come in and consult with you as you do work through this process?
Yeah, we have Ms. Tamara Patrick, who is the, I think, the head of the tourism.
Tourism director.
Yes, the tourism director that handles all movie type things that are coming into the county. And she's actually the person who approached those.
And she has been working with them, to your point, Commissioner Franklin.
Okay, so a lot of times we say has been, but that may be two, three, four years prior. And I actually know the gentleman that's been appointed by the governor in that position. And up until I spoke with him not too long ago, he didn't really have as much of a working relationship with us. There was a, you know, relationship there, but not as much of a working one. So the only thing I would say is, let's make sure that they're actually at the table. I think we make a lot of assumptions. And it may not be an assumption, it just may be like as simple as, I haven't talked to my sister in a while. They may need to talk to the person so they know what's going on as of today's date, not two years ago, not three years ago, but as of today's date, when it comes to the taxation and being able to recoup it. The reason I say that is where I respect the State of Georgia, but at the end of the day, what we don't want to do is put ourselves in a predicament where we're having to then give so many tax cuts, but then it's at the exempt or at the cost of our community and also not making sure that our students have an opportunity to be involved. So I think there's a space there that we can massage a little bit more and have a little bit more deeper conversation. And that's only because I've had that experience in that area and continue to have that experience in that area.
Yes, I'm the head of Stanford.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner, great question. Part of the discussion that we've had, working with community development, economic development, our tax assessor office, our tax commissioner's office, and the Development Authority is to talk about that very thing. So in a perfect world, if a project is onboarded through Tamra to come forward to the board for approval, one of the things we are looking at as far as the tools is the payment in lieu of taxes. So therefore, we're not just, you know, giving away the farm. We're ensuring that those individuals can come to the table with skin in the game, even though we may provide a discount on the front end, the payment in lieu of taxes, where you can kind of gin down that impact at later date. And ultimately, we're looking at all those tools to help us out. So the great thing is when companies are coming in and onboarding, whether it's infused in our system through Development Authority or Economic Development, or even through a conversation through our zoning, through community development, those four or five departments do work in tandem to make sure that we're looking at what seems to be the best incentive and the best package that we can provide to those businesses prior to bringing it before the board for final approval.
And not just incentives, but what we're going to receive in return. Remember, at the end of the day, we're not sitting in a position at Clayton County where we're begging, because if they go to Atlanta to film the same movie, it's going to cost them a whole lot more. So we need to know that we're sitting in an advantageous situation and position, and we definitely need to go to the table with that mindset.
And I will add that the conversations that Ms. Patrick has had with the State Department of Film has been current, current conversations. Ms. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Egeke, you mentioned, and I think I heard this correctly, that right now the county only has one area that's possibly movie-ready if someone is inquiring. Is that correct? And that's the Mountain View area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's under that zoning.
As far as zoning, right. And how soon after we make this, well, assuming that we make the change to the zoning and all, will we be ready to accept any offers or someone coming in?
The process that we are initiating, that we are going through, will come for you for hearing in November. And I believe that a company plans to start using it, that's immediately, around November or early January. They are, in addition to what Mr. CEO of Stanford said, in that, in that conversation, there's a lot of mentorship for our people involved in it. There's a lot of discussions outside of just making, shooting movies that involve. So they plan on coming in, I think, first week of, or first week of December, really.
Okay. So will they, will they be setting up their own buildings or, what are these buildings called that they put up in a day or two or whatever?
This particular case, the building is actually standing.
Okay.
It's a, it's an old, it's a warehouse. They're going to redesign the interior and, and set up their soundstage and all that.
Okay, so it will be up and down that corridor that we visited when we went on our viewing?
No, this is on commercial court.
Okay.
This is on a commercial corridor.
Okay.
And it, I mean, if I may, Commissioners, it beats some of the stuff that are coming to us for those warehouse areas.
And I will add that the company, and I have spoken to them, they're talking about apprenticeships for, apprenticeships and partnerships through Clayton State, the Clayton County Public Schools, as well as community partnerships as well. So they want to be engaged and ingrained within the Clayton County community. Any other questions?
Yeah, I love the idea. Has there been an idea of possibly putting together a board or a task force to begin to aggressively, begin to answer a lot of the questions and to move this along a little quicker?
And like the COO was talking about, there's a lot of conversations in his office already that hopefully he going to pull that together and be able to address some of what you're referencing, and interconnectivities and Commissioner Franklin mentioned, so that it becomes a more coordinated effort, not just one by one.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, sir, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll have a presentation, I believe, Ms. Brandis or Mr. Howard, I don't know if you're going to be doing it, but it's a lobbyist update and a possible scope of extended services. Ms. Parkman and Mr. Howard?
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us this evening, rather, to give you a brief overview of what to expect in the 2022 session, as well as some of the work that we've been, you know, able to instrumentally carry forth in the name of Clayton County post 2021 session, and of course, what to anticipate in the upcoming special session. So I'll let Howard give a brief overview of the upcoming special session on redistricting.
Sure, so as you guys may have seen in the news, just a few days ago, the governor has called a special session on reapportionment to follow the 2020 census and its completion, focused on redistribution of citizens throughout, equitably throughout the entire state. And so on November the 3rd, we'll actually have the 236 members of the General Assembly call back into action, and a number of, a number of maps, which we have yet to see so far, will be considered and ultimately approved or ratified by the General Assembly. So obviously, this has a lot of impact on the county, and every jurisdiction is going to be impacted by population shifts. Georgia's obviously taken on a, you know, continued to grow over the last 10 years, so they'll be trying to figure out how to equitably distribute the number of new residents across all your districts, whether it's from the county level, down to municipalities, and obviously the General Assembly. But happy to talk more about this or to take some questions at the end, because I know it's a hot topic. Also, so this slide is really more focused on the 2022 session. Worth noting, the governor did specify that other local issues or other, other business by the General Assembly largely would not be taken up. So we don't, there was some speculation earlier in the year that there might be room for other issues to be addressed. I think there's one issue of taxation that deals with the federal government, and then other than that, everything that we're going to see going forward is going to be taken to, starting in January 2022. Top priority for Clayton County, since, prior to our joining, but certainly for the foreseeable future until we can make real progress here, is really airport advocacy and making sure we've got an equitable distribution of revenue streams at the airport, Hartsfield-Jackson. Also, we've been really active on public health issues. I think we might have mentioned in our last report that there were a number of state legislative proposals that had real impacts and really were taking away some of the agency and ability for state or for local agencies, county agencies to do as they please with resources and personnel. So those are things that we've been fighting. We had some success in 2021 on that. And we did also, I think, win over a really important ally, a new chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, Shaw Blackman, who's indicated both privately and publicly his willingness to help steer a piece of legislation that will address some of the issues that we have with Hartsfield-Jackson and the city of Atlanta.
Right, and key to that, just piggybacking on the Department of Public Health and Mental Health Services and available funds, we've also been able to identify some additional funding and grant opportunities for the county that we can kind of, you know, discuss a little bit more later on. But, but that's kind of a continuation of our expanded advocacy and opportunities that we present to the county to be able to facilitate these services for the constituency. Also, and I know that we actually just saw the AJC article today, Chairman, where you were quoted regarding the importance of tech infrastructure. And I know Commissioner Davis, you've also mentioned, you know, and all the commissioners actually on broadband, infrastructure and the ability to attract new economic development opportunities, new businesses to be able to have the infrastructure that would serve these businesses and demands, and of course, those bring in new jobs. So assisting the county and identifying some of those funds, of course, attracting new development to help the county to continue to grow are also top of mind, and as we understand, a key component of your 2022 adopted agenda. So as we've discussed, Howard alluded to this a bit in terms of the airport revenue recovery fund, a number of bills were introduced by members of the Clayton County delegation. This past session, those bills were introduced, but there was no action taken, which means that those bills are still alive for the 2022 session. We'll continue to, of course, work collaboratively with the Clayton delegation under the leadership of Chairwoman of the delegation, Berno, to continue to stay in front of the Ways and Means Chairman and other, in the House, and other stakeholders at the state capitol to be able to leverage opportunities in addition to opportunities to encourage and foster economic development within the area surrounding the airport to help provide a stronger tax base and recovery to the county.
He should may speak to some of this when he comes up, but one of the things that we've been, we've been talking about, and really it just come up as a priority for the county, is making sure, especially as, you know, the world reopens and we start to see conferences coming back, and, you know, they're far-flung to different corners of the state, but a lot of important discussions and intelligence is coming from those in-person gatherings. Brandis and I have already attended a number of them and been able to report out to Clayton County in just the last couple of months. But a couple others that, of course, you guys have been very familiar with over the years that are kind of getting reconstituted, would be include the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. They postponed their, you know, traditionally, I think, an April date to November, I think, 11 through 13th for their ACCG Connect. And again, not only is it important for us to stay in front of some of the policy priorities that come out of there, because they'll be really important for the General Assembly, but also there are going to be opportunities for Clayton County to weigh in as one of the largest and most important counties in the state on those priorities in important and meaningful ways. Same thing for NACO, the National Association of Counties. And so what we've been really tasked with is just pulling together places and spaces where Clayton can extend and expand its influence by being present, or whether or not members of the commission or even staff are able to travel and attend those events. I'll let Brandis talk about the others.
Right, so we've had an opportunity, as an example, as the ACCG, NACO, ARC, most recently this past summer, the ACCG, where we served as, as kind of a liaison, the tentacles were extended for the county and having representation at this organization, as they set their policy platform. Of course, we wouldn't have the ability to vote on any of the measures, but certainly having that voice in the room in addition to some of the other commissioners like Franklin and certainly Commissioner Davis and Hambrick, filling in the gaps, and as Howard mentioned, broadening the platform that Clayton County hopes to push, and certainly being the driving force throughout the state in terms of leveraging policies that are positive for the county and continue to draw additional funding for infrastructure, water services, so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I'll just add a little opinion, our opinion to that, you know, I'm sure you guys are all aware that the federal government did decide to make appropriations to the state of Georgia, I think, in the tune of $4.8 billion. And so the state's got some discretion as to how it's going to spend those dollars, and then obviously, local governments like Clayton County have also been awarded dollars. I think there's real opportunity with the nearly $20 billion flowing to the state to figure out how to both leverage those dollars, make sure more of those dollars are spent on transportation or infrastructure, technology projects that find a home in Clayton County. I know, you know, the MARTA decision and discussion has been in the news over the last week or two, is also, I think, factors into those discussions. So I think these are just a kind of a sampling of some of the associations that we would stay in front of, membership associations and other professional, you know, associations that are going to really have an impact on how successful the county is going to be in appropriations.
All right, with that, we'll take your questions. We promise we keep it brief.
Any questions? Commissioner Hammer?
Yes, on the money you just mentioned, the billion, four billion, whatever, is that part of that money that the governor's using now for the law enforcement?
So at present, the governor has appointed a 36-member committee to figure out how to spend the $4.8 billion, it went straight to the state. The other 15.3 billion went to individual jurisdictions like Clayton County, like the city of Jonesboro, Lovejoy, et cetera, like MARTA. So this $4.8 billion, I think they've had one preliminary meeting to talk about potential ideas for expenditure. And probably the headline here is that the governor has both created a process, basically a grant application process for industries that have been hardest hit by COVID, and they've actually had to move the deadline for those grants to be applied for. So I think it was initially September the 30th, and now it's moved to the end of October, yeah, so Halloween, October the 31st. And then the first disbursements for those grants as they are awarded are expected at the top of the year, so January 2022. So again, you guys have agencies that may say, hey, we've got, you know, real needs that, or we've got real expenditures that have been impacted or been driven up by the pandemic. We want to get in front of some of those, some of those dollars, or make, make requests even in line with industries. I think this, this pot of money is mostly focused on industry, expecting that, you know, your jurisdiction has received some dollars from the rescue plan. But I, we, I think this is uncharted territory, and we think if there are dollars to be spent, we want to be asking on behalf of Clayton County.
Now, my next question, the COO may know the answer to this one. The lobbyists that we have with the school system and I think the municipal.
You're talking about the federal lobbyists?
Yes, the federal lobbyists, as far as the airport is concerned, which is a big deal with me and for me. Is that a part of the working group? Are they a part of the working, of that working group?
It could be, yes. Ohio River South's primary role is looking at our liaison work on the state level and other non-governmental organizations throughout the state of Georgia. The federal lobbyists that we have are working directly with our DC folk to talk about the needs, whether it's the FAA, whether it's Homeland Security, some other things in the DC area. But as it pertains specifically with their charge, the federal lobbyists, they're working on behalf of that collaboration, the school system, the cities that were part of that discussion, to ensure that, I guess, the appropriation of funding from the federal government, that the county should get its fair share. So those two areas counter are working in tandem. So when you hear Brandis and Howard talk about the work with the city of Atlanta, whether we're talking about evergreen taxation, or we're just talking about concessionaire taxation, the federal lobbyists is talking more about the FAA's role in ensuring that they bring in the funding from that space, whereas Brandis and Howard's team is working directly with the city of Atlanta to try to figure out how we bring in legislation or policy change to bring more money to the game.
Can we keep them informed?
Oh, yes.
Of what's going on?
Yes, they are aware, they are aware, our federal lobbyists. They've been dormant for the last two months, but we're looking to ensure that there's a collaboration to move to.
Good, okay, I would like to see that.
But let me just add to this, reference to our federal lobbyists, just got an update today that Senators Warnock and Ossoff presented a bill that addresses, and Padilla, Senator Padilla, also co-signed on the bill that addresses revenue from the airport. So they have introduced a bill, and of course, we need to push hard and continue to support and encourage them to get others to jump on that bill on the federal level in the Senate. So we've got some positive movement right now, so we moving forward.
Great.
I have a question.
Commissioner Franklin?
First, I want to make a statement, make sure I frame this right. I really appreciate the level of professionalism that you all bring to this space. It's so important that we have that seat at the table at all times, and that we are able to not only share our interests, but be able to gain information back on the state level. So the level of professionalism and your level of reporting has been something I've not seen in five years since I've been in this role, and I appreciate it. Thank you. That's the first thing. Secondly, and your transparency, secondly is with the $4.8 billion that the state is looking to allocate, as we know, it's the state that determines when our courts are open and closed, all right? We know that we just went through the whole exercise with our, all right? But at the end of the day, I do know that both our, both levels, including our solicitor and so forth, are having issues that they're still having to deal with, a backlog. And as we know, recently in Fulton County, they went forth and lobbied for additional funds from their particular board, where our board has already given them funds, given the funds over there. But as you know, Clayton County being the one to prosecute even those at the airport, it's already been established that we take on a heavier burden. Is there any way that we could add to our priority list to have a portion of those $4.8 billion to be allocated to us, a little bit more in that capacity? Because we don't control when courts are open and closed. And I hate to say it, even most recently, with the passing of our public prosecutor, there were folks that were left in jail for an extended period of time. And when I asked a question to the state, you know, who's been footing that bill is Clayton County. So we were already in the hole, is what I'm saying. We were already in the hole for footing that bill, and until Medicare and Medicaid is expanded to those individuals, we've got to be able to make up that shortfall. So the amount that we've allocated is not quite enough. Is there any way possible that, or what are the steps that's needed for us to be able to go after a few more of those dollars? There are only two ports in the state of Georgia that are serious ports, and that's the Savannah Port and that airport. And we're prosecuting those folks. So on that reason alone, we should have a little bit extra given to us on the state.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a strong case to be made. And all this, all this decision-making does rest with the governor and this 36-member committee. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't lift up the, you know, extraordinary burden that the county is taking on by having to take on the public safety responsibilities for the airport in its county. And I know that's been a discussion we've had as we negotiated with the city of Atlanta and talked to leaders in the General Assembly about also places where it's very clear we're putting the bill. So I see no reason why not, and I think that, you know, we should talk more about the formal process, because in present, it's a grant application process, and it, you know, again, it's uncharted territory, but I think there's no reason we shouldn't.
If there's a resolution we need to put before the board and even a claim to city of Atlanta, we know what the answer may be, but sometimes it's about stating that claim to make our position stronger even down the road. So I would like for us to look at that. And then secondly, I'm not done, sir. Secondly, not too long ago, we had the, the director of the hospital come before us and say that we're not allocated any funds from the state of Georgia. Is there still an opportunity for us to go after funds for that as well?
Yeah, so I'd imagine so.
She just needs to put forth an application instead of putting the burden up.
I think that's definitely the first step I would recommend, yes.
So maybe do we need to, Mr. COO, I guess, or whoever, do we need to make a formalized motion for this board to make a recommendation to her to put forth the application? Because it's one thing to say, we weren't awarded any funds, but it's another thing to, if there's an opportunity to put forth an application, to be able to do so, instead of leaving that burden once again on the backs of our local funds that could be used for something else.
And let me just add that they have made application, and they have hired additional personnel to make additional applications every time that opportunity comes up. And she said that in the last presentation.
Okay, so can you let me know, please? I'm sorry. Can y'all double check that?
It's for grants.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So to answer your question, Commissioner, yes, this board certainly can take the position to make a recommendation to Southern Regional to apply for additional ARPA funds that the state has been allocated. But the Chairman is correct, Mr. Prey was made aware of that from our COO's office as we went through the process, that there's other funding opportunities out there that they can take advantage of. So they are aware of the additional funding that could potentially help them out, and she said that she would take advantage of it.
So do we need to give a support letter? Just one last question.
I don't think, I think that would help in the application process, that they see that the county is supporting them, not to mention the 1.5 that you already given them, which roughly, I'm sorry, 3.1 that we gave them through the ARPA funds when we provided which roughly, I'm sorry, 3.1 that we gave them through the ARPA funds when we provided enhancements to their, to their service staff. So providing that support letter in addition to their application to the state certainly would hurt us.
So let me ask you this last question. So understanding that where we are, what would be the process for this board to get, not only this board to give a support letter, but to also rally all the cities, to also give an additional support letter to be able to make that application a little bit stronger? As we know, you got to be able to make, make the need, understand, help people understand the need, but as anything, we want to make sure that they know they got folks in their corner that are also supporting for this ask.
I think that makes sense as well.
Do we need to bring it to a formal board, before our next board meeting, or is it just need, how do we do that? Or how do they advise that we do that for lobbyists, so that we can position ourselves stronger with the state?
Of course, I would say that any documentation or collateral you can provide, certainly with the coalition of the cities in addition to the county making that case, and a part of our role, and you guys are going to get me on record for saying this, I kind of hesitate a bit, but part of our role would be to try to help encourage any additional funds, making the case, you've laid out, obviously, from a safety standpoint, but certainly in terms of helping the hospitals, depending on, you know, which counties have been hardest hit, and whatever, understanding some of the data set and points that they'll look at at the state level to determine how disbursements are made.
Thank you so much.
And if there, you guys can determine, obviously, how to appropriately appropriate those funds.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you all.
You're welcome. I just wanted to make one more, part of the agenda spoke to scope of service change, and Brandis and Howard spoke in detail about the role they play for us and have done a yeoman's job in representing this county. This board, early on, talked about lost leader opportunities when it comes to being in meetings and banning space. And so part of the discussion was whether or not there was some value, because the Howards and the Brandises of the world are already residing in that space, because they're already at the meeting. So the goal is to provide to you all in the form of a contract amendment to increase the stipend associated with their contract, but it would outline specifically those additional roles and responsibilities that it will be taking on. You should see that coming forth, not at the board meeting next Tuesday, but the following board meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so let me go ahead and just add this as well. Through several meetings with the Clayton County Coalition, myself and some of the mayors, we are all in agreeance, as well as their boards, that they, we all support the hospital, so getting those letters of support is not an issue. Also, the coalition has assessed a rough estimate as to what the value of the services we provide at their airport is. So there is already documentation on how many court cases we prosecute, what it goes through from the, whether it's the Sheriff's Department that picks up anybody up at the airport, or if the city of Atlanta takes people down there. One thing you got to understand also is that they might make charges out there, but they have a latitude, if they put it on a city charge, then it does not come to Clayton County. But felony cases, they send to Clayton County. So there is a definite formula that we, that we utilize to make an assessment as to how much it would come, come to. But, you know, we growing as the airport's growing every day, and there's additional charges being filed, so there's, there's information, I'm saying all that to say, there's information that you can glean upon to make sure that we are moving in the same direction.
Perfect.
Yeah, so like I said, the Clayton County entities, that is pretty much headed with Representative, by Representative Bernal, doing an excellent job getting that information. And we even went to speak before the state senate, I think it was the last session, in reference to that very issue. So there has been conversation that happened on the state level already as well, and we'll continue to make those efforts.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to echo what you said, and so therefore, I give a formal request to the COO, if I may, for it to be added, no matter who it needs to come from, for that letter to be added to the next agenda to, for approval, and then for the ask for those cities, so that we can get that ball rolling and get to where we need to be. We got to get to the finish line. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Franklin, Ms. Parkman, for your presentation.
Great night.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right, there being no other business before this board, we will be in adjournment.